Mrs. Ry, you can start.
Good morning. In accordance with Bylaw 146 and Virginia Code 2.2-3707, the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach has called for a special meeting to be held on Friday, June 4th, 2021 at 10:00 a.m. Pursuant to the state of emergency related to the COVID-19 pandemic, the Governor's executive orders, the Virginia Freedom of Information Act as amended by the Virginia General Assembly, and the School Board's April 7th, 2020 Emergency Resolution, and the need to hold a special meeting on June 4th, 2021, the School Board will meet electronically via Zoom. Members of the public will be able to observe this meeting through live streaming on bb schools.com, broadcast on VBTV Channel 47, and on Zoom. The purpose of this special meeting is for the School Board to vote on a motion to cancel any School Board meeting on June 8th or 9th, 2021 due to pending litigation and any potential public confusion regarding the date of the School Board meeting. With that, Madam Clerk, would you kindly, I call this meeting to order and ask Madam Clerk to take attendance.
School Board members, I will be calling your name. When I call your name, please respond if you are present. Mrs. Anderson?
Mrs. Anderson is present.
Mrs. Felton?
Mrs. Felton is present.
Ms. Franklin? Okay, Ms. Holtz?
Present.
Ms. Hughes?
Present.
Mrs. Manning? Ms. Melnick?
Present.
Ms. Owens?
Present.
Ms. Riggs?
Present.
Mrs. Ry?
Present.
And Mrs. Weems? Madam Chair, right now we have eight Board members present via Zoom.
Ms. Franklin is trying to get in.
Wait one minute.
And we'll wait one moment. We are trying to get Mrs. Franklin.
Okay, just, she just texted me and she says she's in, but she's muted. So I'm looking on the list. I don't see her. Let me see if she's in and isn't attendee. Let me get her cellphone number. Oh, she called in. Okay.
Unmute her. unmute her. Attendees, 9657.
I didn't see 9657.
6789.
6789. That's her, 6789.
Okay, Mrs. Franklin?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, Mrs. Franklin, are you present?
I am present.
Thank you. Madam Chair, we have nine School Board members present via Zoom.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, so that leads us to adoption of the agenda. Motion to approve?
I motion to approve the agenda, Trenaece Riggs.
Second, Mrs. Anderson?
So a motion made by Mrs. Riggs, a second by Mrs. Anderson. Discussion? Okay, all in favor, are we going to use the raised hand feature, Madam Clerk, on the?
And Madam Chair, this is Mrs. Lynetti. Would you just read the motion again so it's clear as to what voting on?
Well, this was the agenda adoption.
My fault.
Okay.
Okay, I will call each Board member by name to ask for their vote on adoption of the agenda. Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Felton?
Yes.
Mrs. Franklin?
Yes.
Mrs. Holtz?
Yes.
Mrs. Hughes?
I am abstaining from all votes today because my firm represents Ms. Manning.
Ms. Melnick?
Yes.
Mrs. Owens?
Yeah.
Ms. Riggs?
Yes.
Ms. Ry?
Yes.
Ms. Weems is not here. We have eight votes yes and one abstention.
Thanking Madam Clerk, so the agenda is approved. Now we get to the vote on the motion itself, and I will reread what was conveyed a few moments ago. I am looking for a motion for the following in response to the call for this meeting, to vote on a motion to cancel any School Board meeting on June 8th or 9th, 2021 due to pending litigation and any potential public confusion regarding the date of the School Board meeting. So before we open it up for discussion, a motion to approve?
I make the motion to approve.
One at a time.
Mrs. Anderson, so move.
Trenaece Riggs, a second.
So Mrs. Anderson, motion. Mrs. Riggs, a second. All right, discussion. And how do we, Madam Vice Chair, how do you want to handle this part?
I'll handle this with the raised hand feature, and right now, Mrs. Holtz's hand is raised, so if you could check with her first, and then I'll?
Sorry, I didn't take it down for the okay of the agenda.
Okay, all right, thank you. I'm monitoring the raised hand.
Thank you. All right. Colleagues?
Just a quick reminder, Ms. Melnick, that Ms. Franklin won't be able to raise a hand by call-in, so you may want to check with her.
Okay, Madam Chair, I'll defer to you to that, and in the queue is Laura Hughes.
Okay, Mrs. Hughes?
Yeah, I would just like to reiterate the same thing that I brought up Tuesday night. We are here because we just seem to be circumventing the public too much. And I think that what everybody needs to remember is we work for the public. We are public servants. Anything that circumvents allowing the public to be, to participate fully at these meetings, it just, it needs to stop. I frankly agree that the date should have been changed from Tuesday to Wednesday, but if you're going to make these changes, the public needs to be in on that. It was not done in time. And to change it at the last minute without notice and without public input, and no steps were taken to broadcast the public portion of the meeting, which is absolutely essential since some of the Board members seem to not want to let people into the building. It's just not acceptable. And I do appreciate my three colleagues that voted against changing it for no reason other than transparency. It's not, again, I just want to reiterate, the change is a good idea, but the transparency is really problematic. And had we respected that, we wouldn't be here today.
So if I may, if I may call on one of our colleagues who called for this meeting to explain, again, the motion and why we're here today. I will repeat that given where we're at now, pending litigation developed in the meantime, and there are colleagues who asked for this meeting with the concern that there would be uncertainty, at least until Monday, about what's going to happen next to Wednesday or Tuesday. And for the benefit of the public, we are here today to discuss if the prudent and responsible thing to do is to cancel both meetings to avoid any such confusion that could result because things are just so uncertain right now.
Madam Chair, Mrs. Anderson would like to answer your question, and then Mrs. Franklin would like to speak.
All right, Mrs. Anderson?
So I think the motion speaks to itself, and it's very clear that it's due to the fact that there is pending litigation over the June 9th meeting. And so any potential public confusion can result in the fact that Monday morning, the litigation will be ruled on by a judge. So that's why we need to just cancel the entire thing so that there's no no question about is there an eighth meeting or ninth meeting? Or, you know, we'll just cancel it altogether. There is no meeting on June 9th or June 8th, period. That's why I think we should vote in favor of canceling it altogether, so there's no confusion now.
Okay, Mrs. Franklin? Can you hear me?
I just wanted, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, loud and clear.
Okay, I just want to get some counsel from Kami. But also, before I do that, I want to also just state, and this this particular vote, and the vote on Tuesday night, really gives me heartburn. I, if nothing else, want to think that we sit on a board that has integrity. And I do feel like if we're not following the policy and procedure to on Tuesday night, and I actually emailed Carolyn Ry on Tuesday night, and there was just something in my gut that just did not feel right about that with it passing in the sense that we had not informed the public, I guess, within this proper timeframe. And I just feel personally that if nothing else, people should be able to look at this board and say that we're doing things with integrity because that's really, at the bottom of it, what we need to have as public servants. And so with that being said, I want to do this properly. And so Kami, Ms. Lynetti, would you let us know, is this the only option in order to properly move forward from here? Because I do feel like there has been so much confusion with the emails that we've been receiving. I don't know what's going on with the website in terms of things not being posted correctly. I mean, I don't know if that's the case, if it's not the case. But I can say that there does appear to be some misgivings about what time the meeting was today and what's happening next week. So, Ms. Lynetti, is this the only proper way to move forward logistically so that we can stay within the guidelines we have in our bylaws?
The meeting is properly called. It is a special meeting.
I'm sorry, not the special meeting for today, I'm sorry. I didn't mean that. I meant for next week. Do we have any, what are our options? What are our valid options in order to stay within our guidelines, within our bylaws?
And I think I know what you're asking. Let me see if I can explain where we are. Mrs. Manning served a lawsuit on the School Board. We received it somewhere close to 3:00 on 2nd. And there, and that motion is set for a hearing on Monday, June 7th, at 8:45 in the morning. With court, I can't tell you what happened. 8:45 will be sometime on June 7th. The purpose of that hearing is to get a judge to rule that any decisions made on June 1st were not proper because Mrs. Manning is alleging that it was the June 1st meeting was not properly noticed and called. So therefore, the School Board was not authorized to vote on June 1st. That is what a judge would take up on Monday. I do not know what the judge would rule. I could argue for that another time. But what could potentially happen is if the judge were to say sometime on Monday, June 7th, that I do not think the June 9th meeting was properly voted on, that means the June 9th meeting would not go forward. You do have the June 8th meeting as a regular meeting, but now you have a situation where you did not put out an agenda for June 8th because in your belief, you had properly voted on the June 9th meeting. So the agenda, the notice and the agenda for June 8th went out, June 9th went out last night. Now, the notice is proper for June 8th, but the problem is you don't have agenda material. So sometime on Monday, we would have to turn around and say, these are the agenda materials public for what we would be doing on June 8th if you went forward. And so we'd have to get the whole package back together, figure it out. And then a concern was, now you're finding out June 7th in the afternoon, oh, suddenly there's a meeting on June 8th. Anybody wanted to sign up, any plans people had, it would be really confusing, and we'd have to pull, figure out what agenda materials would go forward on June 8th. There were some other things. There was originally a hearing scheduled for June 8th, an employee hearing, there were a bunch of resolutions. Mrs. Weems pulled off a resolution because she wasn't sure that she would be there on June 9th. It's not clear that that would go on. So the concern is going to be that because we don't know the outcome of the litigation until sometime later on June 7th, it's going to be very difficult for anybody to understand if you have to go forward on June 8th. If the judge doesn't rule against you, and then June 9th is on, now you still have a confusion. Did people think June 8th was happening or June 9th was happening? So looking at this, I can't expedite that litigation. I can't do anything before the afternoon of June 7th, Monday, and that creates a problem. So if you did not do anything, let's say we did not call this meeting today, and you went to court, you would just be stuck with trying to figure out on Monday afternoon, what are you going to do and whether you want to go forward. If at that point you wanted to cancel the meeting or not go forward on June 8th, then you'd have to call another meeting on Monday afternoon somehow to do this. So you'd be late Monday afternoon trying to figure out what you were doing on June 8th. Again, if the judge is to rule that June 9th is proper, then you could go forward on June 9th on there. But again, what does the public understand? And does everybody know what they're signing up for? So that's where we ran into some of the confusion on this. So after talking with everybody, the thought was, maybe we just don't have a meeting on June 8th or June 9th. That way, the public doesn't have to worry about what day should they have signed it, what day they should have come, you all should know, and you'll know what the agenda materials are. Again, we did not, notice was originally for June 8th, but we don't have agenda for June 8th. So June 8th agenda would have to come out sometime on Monday. So that's sort of where you are. By moving today for the meeting, you will know today whether or not there's a meeting next week. Otherwise, you'd be waiting till Monday.
And you're saying that it's too late right now to still have the meeting on June 8th because we can't get the agenda materials out in time? That's what, I just wanted to clarify that.
Oh, ma'am, the June 8th meeting was originally called as part of the meeting. So that remains up. If the judge, if a judge on Monday disqualifies the vote to move it to June 9th, the June 8th meeting remains on the books because that was what originally set. That notice is appropriate, but your problem is you've got to figure out what your agenda is sometime on June 7th, get it out, if anybody wanted to sign up to speak, or other people had adjusted calendars. We were concerned that there would not be enough time on the afternoon of June 7th and the evening of June 7th to figure out on the agenda. The notice for June 8th would remain appropriate if the June 9th meeting is disqualified. But it's the, and agenda materials are not required to be out three days ahead of time. The notice is required. The agenda materials just need to be made available to the public at the same time that they're made available to School Board members, which we would do sometime on June 7th if you wanted to go forward. But just in my explanation now, you can see how this would be confusing. So the thought was, if you can decide today, you are not scrambling on June 7th trying to figure out what's going to happen on June 8th or June 9th. Now, again, if the vote today is not to cancel the meeting on June 8th and June 9th, then you will have to wait to Monday, see what the court decides, and then you'll have to decide what you're going to do on Monday afternoon.
But then we have an issue with Wednesday because that's not enough time on Wednesday to change the meeting date. Is that correct?
Okay, so let's say that the judge does not disqualify the vote that moved the meeting to June 9th. That would remain on June 9th. But if I'm, for individuals who don't know what's going on with the court hearing, not clear, there was some confusion that people don't know what they're signing up for. You could go for, if the judge does not affect the June 9th meeting date, you could go forward on June 9th. But I could not tell you now what a judge is going to rule on Monday. I could not tell you before Monday midday.
Okay, so essentially, we have three options here. So we could either keep the meeting for June 8th because we've already put out the special notice, correct? Or we could?
June 8th is not, but June 9th. June 9th is your, you don't have a special notice. June 8th was your regularly called meeting. You voted on June 1st to move the June 8th meeting to June 9th. So you can, if you want to go forward and you want to assume that your June 9th meeting is correct, you just have to wait for the outcome of the court hearing on Monday.
Okay. If I may, Mrs. Franklin? And I appreciate the comments. I do want to respond because I want to convey, again, what Kami did when the question of integrity is raised. Mrs. Lynetti has made it very clear that this meeting today is properly called. And as for last June 1, that's going to ultimately be determined in court. But please know that, you know, that School Board leadership, we've been, with every step of the way, operating in concert with counsel. And so I just think it's important for me, for you, to realize and understand that, and for me to share that. So thank you.
Madam Chair, Mrs. Owens and Mrs. Riggs are in the queue.
All right, thank you. Ms. Owens?
Thank you. And I think Ms. Franklin touched on a part of my question. I did want to make sure that we had kind of the options, if you will, laid out. My understanding, and I think Ms. Franklin was asking about three options. My understanding is that there is not an option at this point to have the meeting back on the Tuesday, June 8th because we voted at the special meeting for the June 9th date. That's where we are. And today's meeting has an agenda preset to vote on, and that option of going back to June 8th was not what was put on today's special meeting, agenda, motion, and notice. And so that one is not an option on the table for us at this point. At this point, our only option on the table is what's on our agenda, which is either to cancel and say, we're just not going to do meetings next week because of the pending litigation, because of the confusion, or we are going to let the court play out and kind of decide from there, last minute, what's going on. Way certainly the concerns about transparency and notice to the public. And with that in mind, it would be hard for me to think that making decisions next week on Monday evening is going to be more transparent or give better notice to the public. So that would be a concern for me. My other kind of concern, or consideration, if you will, is that Ms. Weems' resolution that she pulled off the agenda because she wasn't going to be able to make the Wednesday meeting, if the court rules and the Wednesday meeting was considered, we couldn't have, if the court rules that our last special meeting was not appropriately voted on, and we default back to that Tuesday meeting, I would want to have clarity if our agenda will stand as it is or if on Monday night, Tuesday morning, we would be re-adding the resolution to the agenda. And that would be concerning to me that people wouldn't have had proper notice to come out and speak on it, which was the concern the first time around with that, with the resolutions, wanting the public to have the proper notice. And now we've kind of, we're in a situation where are we creating that twice if we move forward? Where there wasn't the ability for people to know what's going to be on the agenda in advance. And so that is a concern for me with the, if we move forward and have meetings next week. I would just wanted to clarify. Ms. Lynetti, you said that we would be in compliance for notice on the June 8th meeting because of the previous notice that we put out, even though we have since put out notice that that's changed to the 9th. The eighth notice still counts?
Yes, and that's what, again, what adds to the confusion. If the judge disqualifies any vote taken on June 1st, or day, whatever, you adopted June 8th when you originally adopted the calendar meetings for this year. So basically, it just dissolves any decision on June 1st. So June 8th remains a regularly scheduled meeting. So then you need to figure out on Monday, what are you going to do about a regularly scheduled meeting? You do not currently have an agenda for June 8th. As you've mentioned, I'm not sure that it will match what we currently have out for June 9th. It might, it might not. But I, and again, I cannot tell you at what point on the docket the judge will take this up on Monday. So I can't tell you how soon I could get the information to you to make a decision.
Gotcha. I also wanted to touch on, and there was a concern from a colleague from Ms. Manning this morning that she didn't feel properly noticed for today's meeting. Can?
Would you like to add to you?
Yes, please.
I spoke, as I mentioned, the lawsuit was served on June 2nd. In the afternoon, I contacted with another colleague in my office and spoke to Mrs. Manning's attorney, Mr. Anderson, a little after 3:00 yesterday. While speaking to Mr. Anderson, he indicated to me that his client, Mrs. Manning, was aware that there would be a hearing today. She didn't know what time, and of course, we hadn't set the time at that point. His request, we were discussing how to go forward on Monday or if there was a way to resolve the issue. What he asked us is if there's a way that the School Board could meet earlier today on June 4th that would give him the afternoon to discuss with his client how they wanted to proceed. That's when I, after getting off that call, I then called the chair, and then we started looking for a time in the morning to meet so that we would have, that would be, the meeting would be done. I could give that information to Mr. Anderson by the afternoon so he could then comply with his request for his client. I know that Mrs. Ry sent an email to Mrs. Manning at 5:41 indicating the time and the notice for the meeting. I know that at 7:51, Mrs. Tonyato, the clerk, sent the notice and agenda to all of you. I was speaking with Mrs. Ry a little after 8:00. She wasn't sure that had gone through. So I sent you an email at 8:16 with Mrs. Tonyato's notice and agenda that was received. Shortly around 8:30, all of you, all School Board members, received a Zoom request as a panelist for this meeting. Mrs. Manning was included on that, as with the other emails. We noticed a correction we had to make later in the evening to the notice for the agenda. On the second page of agenda, the time was confusing. The notice time was appropriate, but the agenda listed the call time slightly differently. We corrected that around 11:00 at night, and everyone received those notices. They were posted appropriately. They were sent to individuals who requested to know about the meetings. And School Board members received that. So there would have been at least five or six emails that had gone out to Mrs. Manning. Addition, Mrs. Manning's attorney sent me an email about 6:29 last night, and the first line of the email said, "In light of tomorrow's meeting", and it was discussing some other issues in there. So I can't speak to what Mr. Anderson spoke with his client. I just know that he indicated to me that his client was aware of the meeting. I did not talk to Mrs. Manning directly because she's represented by counsel, but I do know that Mrs. Ry had sent her the email. So I can't explain what happened with her and her counsel. But she certainly knew, um, like, I was informed by her attorney at 3 o'clock yesterday that she was aware there would be a meeting. And I know that there was an email at 5:41 from Mrs. Rai with the meeting time and notice to her. After that, I can't explain why she indicates she doesn't know about the meeting.
Thank you. And I wanted to point out for my colleagues, I'm not sure if they have already noted that we did get an email this morning at 9:55 a.m., um, from Mrs. Manning, saying that she was informed that a special meeting of the board was being considered, but she didn't receive notification of when and exactly what would be discussed. And so I just wanted to point out that, um, it does appear that, um, everybody was made aware that, uh, a meeting was being considered for today. And for those who checked their email before going to bed, knowing that there was a, a meeting being considered for today, I think that that's the prudent thing for us to do as elected officials, knowing that there is a meeting being considered for the following day, to check our emails before bed and in the morning to see if we hadn't heard, um, what the updates for that was. And so I, I wanted to make sure that that was discussed, uh, or noted openly, because it, it is something that, uh, came up. And the last thing that I would ask is, uh, you, you laid out the notification and, um, how we got for today's, uh, special meeting. Are you able to tell us about the, uh, notifications and processes for the past special meeting?
As that's a matter of the lawsuit on Monday, I'd rather not do that in public session. I'd be happy to talk to you individually about it. I can tell you, if you go to the website, you will see the notices, uh, on the website for the June 1st meetings. And they were up there. And then the other issues, I can certainly talk to you about. I don't want to go into exactly what we'll be arguing on Monday, but please feel free to call me directly, and I will explain that to you.
I understand, and I know that we've spoken, um, some about that. And for, it's, you know, it's unfortunate that, uh, as, as the board will be making votes influenced by our knowledge on that, and that we're not able to have, um, that knowledge, uh, openly discussed or available to the public, for them to have a full understanding of the factors that weigh into what our votes may be. But I, um, those are the, the points that I wanted to kind of have discussed or out there. So, thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Manic, remind me of who's next in the queue. Mrs. Riggs. Hey, Mrs. Riggs.
Hi, um, there's a couple of things that I wanted to make a point. Thank you, Jessica, for asking those questions, you know, and, and I understand why we can't have them fully, um, discussed because of the court case, uh, the litigation on Monday. Uh, I think that would clear up a lot of things, because I think people aren't hearing actually everything that, that was, um, sent to us and what was notified of all school board members. And I just, um, I'm glad that you asked that. And, um, I have been staying on my email, uh, all, all yesterday, last night, and all this morning. So you made a good point about that, Jessica, just to find out what was going on and what we would, would need to know for today. But I did want to clarify, because I keep, we keep getting emails about why, why did we even ask to change this meeting from the 8th to the 9th? And I was one that, one of the three that sent in a request, uh, to the chair and, um, asked, could we possibly change the meeting from the 8th to the 9th? Because I had forgot or not realized about the voting being on that Tuesday. We have been looking at the past couple of years at, um, changing our school board meetings automatically to the next Wednesday, the Wednesday after voting day. And I would, I wasn't even thinking, and like Jessica pointed out at our last, at our meeting on the 1st, she had wished she had seen that at our last school board meeting. Because that's all I wanted, is for us to have, every, everyone to have the democratic opportunity to, to go and vote without having to worry about getting back and getting, getting in, into the meeting on time and giving everybody that opportunity. Had nothing to do with anything else. I was looking forward to discussing the resolution. I would like to have everybody have an opportunity to speak of that resolution, and we will, uh, whether it be the 8th, the 9th, or another, the next meeting that we're going to have. So it had nothing to do with knowing people wanted to come and speak of a resolution. My only thought was, let's all be able to have our, exercise our democratic rights and be able to vote without having any interferences that day of a meeting. So, um, we obviously will be looking at that and making sure that if we have to do policy, to make sure whether it's a primary or a regular voting day, that, and it ends up falling on a school board meeting date, we will make sure that that's changed. And to note, we had not had that problem before we changed, several years ago, before we had to change our meetings from a different Tuesdays. Because it's always the first Tuesday of the month, whether it be June for the primaries or November for regular elections. So before, when, when was it, four years ago that we changed it? Before we changed those Tuesdays, we didn't have that problem. We didn't run into that problem of having a school board meetings on the same day as voting day. Because we didn't have our first, and it was the opposite. So I don't even want to explain which one, what that was, but now we do. So we weren't thinking about it. And that is the only reason, had nothing to do with the resolution. So I just wanted to make that clear. Thank you.
Madam Chair, um, Mrs. Hughes and Mrs. Anderson are in the queue.
Yeah, um, so, changing, changing the, the dates that, or, you know, whether it's 1st and 3rd or 2nd and 4th, that, that really doesn't have a lot of bearing on this. So then, the election in November is on the 1st Tuesday, and primary time is on the 2nd Tuesday. So whether you use 1st and 3rd or 2nd and 4th, it would overlap one of them. And last year, there was a primary on the same day as a school board meeting. In fact, I was handing out lit while I was on Zoom, participating in the meeting. I mean, I, I remember that vividly. And I want to reiterate, I think it would have been a good idea to change our meeting from the 8th to the 9th. I don't take any issue with that. I mean, we have other times we change meetings. We change it at the beginning of the school year, so it doesn't coincide with the first day of school. We've changed them in June before, so that it didn't fall during the same week as graduations, because that falls a little bit differently, depending on how the calendar is. Changing a normal meeting date is not the problem. And so I hope the focus doesn't change to that, because that's actually not an issue here. What is an issue here is proper notice. If we'd have discussed this two weeks ago, or a month ago, or, you know, when we approved the calendar, and, you know, maybe we weren't thinking primary things when the calendar was approved, you know, a year ago, as we were dealing with primarily, when do we return to school? I get that. But this still should have been brought up before, you know, it, it shouldn't have been added to this special meeting this past week. And while I think Ms. Owens had a great idea to change it, and I, I've said repeatedly, I would have voted for it with proper notice. Once the discussion turned to where this was not proper notice, I, I think the motion should have been withdrawn, and we should have deferred to, the public needs proper notice. Everything should be transparent. Everything should be done under the eye of the public. We're here today because we had a motion that, you know, on, we had, uh, in addition to the agenda, that wasn't properly noticed. And, and there were reasons for it. Ms. Owens stated quite candidly that she just didn't think about it until then. You know what? No problem. Ms. Lanetti said during the meeting that there was a, a speaker that we were supposed to have, needed to make sure that, you know, that speaker could be there Wednesday instead of Tuesday. I get that. But all of that kind of was a perfect storm for, the public didn't have proper notice. And at that point, it should have been, well, great idea, but we're just kind of late in the game, and it, it should have been withdrawn. And we're just, we're running into things like that too much, I think. And we always need to err on the side of keeping the public in the loop. That's why we're here today, because we didn't keep the public in the loop in a timely manner. So...
So colleagues, I want to, and thank you both, you and Mrs. Riggs. We want to focus on the motion at hand and, and a reminder that there, we are here today specifically to address the pending litigation and the motion on the floor. And so with that, are there any additional comments?
Yes, Mrs. Anderson is still in the queue.
All right, Mrs. Anderson.
So, um, I, I really feel like there was proper notice. If you go back a few years, when we used to post our meetings, uh, in the Beacon, we don't, we no longer do that, because I guess the Beacon doesn't do that anymore. But had, had this been three or four years ago, when we were posting notices of our meetings in the Beacon, people wouldn't have been notified until Sunday, the Sunday before the meeting. Now we post it on our website, so people had more than adequate notice. As of, um, I believe it was either Thursday or Friday evening before the meeting, before the 1st, it was posted. So that's where we post our, our public, uh, announcements now. So there were, I, I argued that there was proper notice, and, and I think that's what probably will be noted, um, on Monday. But, um, you're right, we're here to vote on a motion that the school board vote to cancel any school board meeting on June 8th or 9th, 2021, due to pending litigation. And that's what brought us here today, due to pending litigation and any potential public confusion regarding the date of the school board meeting. So I think that's what we should do, and, uh, I, I would hope that we would vote in favor of the motion that's on the table today.
Madam Chair, um, we have Mrs. Franklin and Mrs. Felton.
Okay, Mrs. Franklin, is it okay with you if we go with Mrs. Felton first, as we have not heard from her?
Of course, yes.
Thank you. Okay, Mrs. Felton, and then Mrs. Franklin.
Thank you, Chair Rai, and thank you all, uh, for this opportunity, and because of the public's sake. And I'm here as a school board member, I'd just like to just express my concern as well. To me, both decisions that was made the other night disenfranchised our voters. One appears to suppress the vote, and the other appears to leave out the part of transparency. Even though it has been said that the voter is, plays a big part in that, in this consideration, it still speaks volumes that this board neither had the, um, moral compass to compromise before we got to this chaotic decision and a legal, uh, pending legal, um, motion to be placed on this board. Because of this chaotic situation that has been stirred up because of, uh, it has been said, the public not being properly, um, noticed, that is a problem. But I see that we have many attendants on this, on this meeting here. So obviously, we must be doing something right about getting the public notified. I just think that moving forward, that we should, as a board, consider policy, procedures and regulations from here on out, so that it won't cause confusion with the public. Because as it says often, we've been hired by the public to do their bidding and to move in their, um, on their voices to be heard. But I do feel that both decisions that has been made here, and we are talking about, has disenfranchised our voters by appearance of, and you might not look at, but appearances and perception that their vote, not being able to have the opportunity has been, is being suppressed, and the presence of not having enough transparency. Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Franklin.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry. I just wanted to clarify. So on Tuesday the 1st, when we took the vote about moving the date, was, was that enough time? Like, I, I understand that the, the question is, could it be added to the agenda? So I, I understand that part. But given the amount of time, was, was that the proper amount of time for notice to the public? And I, I'm a little bit confused about if that was giving enough notice to the public by taking the vote on the 1st, was that enough notice to the public? And, and I just wanted to say that I agree with, with Ms. Felton, that, you know, we all are human. We all forget about stuff and, you know, and, and, you know, like Ms. Hughes said, we, we certainly would love to allow voters the opportunity to vote. And I agree that if this would have been two weeks or a month ago, we all, it sounds like we would all have agreed to have moved the meeting just to, to accommodate, um, those voters. I just, I, I guess I have a little bit of issue with the fact that we did it so last minute because there, there was something that was forgotten. I mean, that, that to me is not a good enough reason to move or move a meeting, at the very last minute and cause this much confusion. I, I, that is where I feel the integrity is, is in question. And not to say that people did this, you know, intentionally. I'm, I'm saying that I just feel like we can't just change policies and procedures and bylaws and just, just to accommodate someone forgetting that they, you know, that they want to participate. So with that being said, I just want to clarify, if we actually had enough time by voting on June 1st to have moved the meeting, do we give enough notice if that was allowable? I, I'm just a little bit confused. Was that enough notice time for the public if, if we could have had it on the agenda?
Mrs. Franklin, I'm assuming, Mrs. and Mrs. Lanetti, that you want me to answer this question?
Yes, if you don't mind, yeah.
Again, I do not want to litigate the case that we will be litigating on Monday. But here's, here's what I'll say to you. At the June, at the May 25th meeting, that was the second meeting in May, two, both meetings in May, you discussed about having a meeting on June 1st to do the superintendent's evaluation. And if you remember, that time you were voting on the superintendent's evaluation process and how that was... 5th, I, I'm sorry, on May 25th, confirmed the time. And if I remember the conversation, Mrs. Hughes was talking about she needed to work, so we didn't want to go early in the day. She asked that it be after 5:00, and y'all confirmed it. When you confirm that date, that May 5th, and again, this wasn't the first time you mentioned the June 1st meeting. We just, we were confirming the start time. The following morning, Mrs. Toniano and I worked it. We put the notice on the board, uh, in the bulletin board. It was put on the website, and it was sent out. There are certain individuals that asked, we notified meetings. That me, that was sent out on the 26th. When we sent that out, we did not know that there would be a request to have a, a special meeting for the question of moving the June 8th to June 9th. So that, those met the request. Those went out on the 26th. Now, this is a special meeting on the June 1st, so that's what the Freedom of Information Act says, is it, notice reasonable under circumstances. But nonetheless, it was all done on, to May 26th, 27th, 28th, and then you have the meeting on June 1st, so that piece it. What changed was, at some point on the 26th, I believe, different school board members then started asking if there was a possibility to move the meeting from June 8th to June 9th. When they started, when there were enough people asking that question, we then started the superintendent's office, and I started looking at. There were a couple of things we had to check. We needed to know if the matters on June 8th could happen on June 9th. One of those issues was, you had an employee hearing set. I had to contact the attorney. I did not know until Friday, June 20th, sorry, May 28th, the morning, that that attorney said he could move the case to... I had to contact the attorney. I did not know until Friday, June 20, sorry, May 28th, the morning, that that attorney said he could move the case to the June ninth. Then I contacted the chair and said, the piece that I had to handle was okay to go to June ninth. My understanding that superintendent, the superintendent had already confirmed that they could move all the issues on June eighth to June ninth. At that point, we then began to speak at how we're going to do it. Again, a special meeting call, if you're calling for addition to doing it. It didn't make sense to schedule a second, second meeting, a special meeting, because you had a June first meeting, because agenda materials would be due out on June second, not only for June eighth or June third. We have to start preparing those materials. So we really need to know by June second or June third, what day and what the agenda materials were, so we could prepare those packages. Because there's a process where you have to get that information out. So the, the notice went out, Mrs. Tonya set the notice, and you'll see it on the website. The notice went out with the agenda and the call for it on the 28th. Again, media, notice reasonable under the circumstances, because it's a special meeting, that meets the requirements. But nonetheless, the notice requirement for a meeting is, if it was three days, if you wanted to argue it was a regular meeting, that did go out on the 26th. Again, the special meeting, so Freedom of Information Act says, we notice reasonable under the circumstances. Again, we were running into that problem. We could have had the June first meet and then scheduled another meeting to take up the issue the seventh or eighth, but that would have put us in a difficult situation to figure out how to get the agenda package materials prepared. We could have done it, but it would have been a scramble to get it out, because there's, as you know, there's a process by which we get that information out, so they went out on there. But the decision at that point was, since you already had a June first meeting, and everyone was aware that there was a June first meeting, and proper notices had gone out, we added the call, and that material all appears on the notice that was posted on the website on May 28th. So that's why we believe it was appropriate. So I'm not getting rest of the issues, Dylan case, but that's the procedural history, how we got here.
So essentially, it just, it just cramped the timeframe by having the last minute request to, to move the meeting. It just cramped the timeframe to even have the agenda prepared, is what I'm understanding?
Because the nature of the motion was to move the meeting. So to prepare an agenda, we had to know what day it was. And again, the agenda materials have to go out, and if you, you know how long that is, it's a long process to prepare all that information, get it, a little time to do that. Normally, it would have gone out Wednesday afternoon or Thursday on there. So we really, if we had tried to schedule a meeting on June second or June third, another meeting, it would have, it would have made it very difficult for us to figure out what to do with the agenda materials. And again, until we knew if you were doing the eighth or the ninth, we didn't know what agenda package we were going to be preparing. So the nature of the motion kind of drove the need to have the meeting on June first. And again, you'd already set a meeting, you'd all agreed that June first was the appropriate day you were going to meet anyway, so that's why it made sense to do it that day.
And can I just clarify something, and I apologize, because this is, you know, me being new on the board. So if we cancel the meeting next week, or, or, yeah, for next week, what happens to those agenda items? Does it get moved to the, the next scheduled meeting? Or do we have a next, or do we have a next special hearing or a special meeting to accommodate that agenda? What, what happens to that meeting agenda? You know, that's supposed to happen next week, does that, where, where does that get moved to?
I can, I can answer that, and I appreciate the question, Mrs. Franklin. So I, I did reach out to the superintendent in advance, because obviously, one of the things I felt the responsibility was on me to see, to, to, to ask about time sensitivity of any of the items for next week. And there were a few in particular that he reached out to certain, you know, departmental chiefs and directors about. But at this point, and, and this would be settled in agenda planning, everything would be pushed up to the June 22nd date, and if we wind up a little heavy with that, we, we have our abridged meeting at the retreat that we can have some spillover there, you know, kind of like a cue of what's time sensitive and what's not. So does that adequately answer your question?
Yeah, so it's not, so basically, we'll push it to the, the, the next scheduled meeting, and then anything that can't be handled there will just spill to the, to the, our, our, whatever you call it.
A bridge meeting at the retreat. And again, that would all be determined in agenda planning and largely directed by staff, and, and, you know, they, they would set, they're the ones who would inform us of the, the time sensitivity and the relative time sensitive, sensitivity of each of the agenda items.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Ms. Owens is in the queue.
I'm, I'm sorry, Madam Vice Chair?
Ms. Owens?
Okay, Ms. Owens, please.
Thank you. I just want to kind of put out there as a final wrap-up comment. Ms. Felton really encompassed a lot of what got us here, in my opinion. And that, when I realized that we were going to be having a meeting on the voting day, obviously, we've all heard and I've said that I wish I would have noted that earlier. I didn't, I regret it. However, I was considering the decision, do I want to move forward knowing that we're going to have the appearance of suppressing the vote one more year, and then correct it next year? Or do I want to attempt to correct it now when we know better and do better? At the time that I requested it, it was 13 days prior to the meeting. In, I guess, consult with the city attorney, I was informed that all of the proper things could happen for notification and for it to be added to the meeting, and so I voted accordingly. I want to make clear that, clearly I value public input. I think that public input and transparency is paramount in what we're doing, and that ultimately, having the meeting canceled for next week and set for our next scheduled meeting, to me, in the position that we are already in, which is difficult, provides the most transparency and notice for public participation. And so even though it's a difficult situation, and none of the, the options are great at this point, I think that that one for me tips the scale slightly on what's going to be in the best interest for transparency, public notice, and encouraging participation from as many citizens as possible while still allowing the ability to handle the vote. So, thank you.
Madam Vice Chair, anybody else? Thank you, Ms. Owens.
Dottie Holtz is here.
Dottie Holtz is on there.
Okay.
Not showing, but she messaged me there.
Mrs. Holtz.
Thank you so much. The concern here from everybody is our lack of public notification. So that's what I'm addressing right now. Well, let's, let's acknowledge the fact that the notice was put out on the website in a timely manner. I agree that it should have been posted in several other places. But we're in the position right now about depending on the income, the outcome of the Monday legislation. Surely, if you're concerned about public notification, Monday afternoon is not enough time to notify the public as to whether it's going to be June eighth or June ninth, or we really don't know. So we need to recognize the fact that the school board does have a right to cancel a meeting. And I think that the only sensible thing to do right now is to cancel the meeting and to deal with the agenda at a different time. I think that's the only fair thing to do. And so I will be voting to cancel any school board meeting that might be on the June eighth or ninth. Thank you.
Okay. Mrs. Malnick, where do we stand?
We have the all-clear, Madam Chair.
Okay. So, so let me go ahead and say that I want to continue to always have my colleagues to always feel that, you know, our, our forums are just that open forums for us to be candid with one another. And so all your comments collectively, I truly appreciate. And I have a little reflecting to do myself as chair. Again, I want to, and, and I do understand that being in compliance with policy and bylaws, which is always first and foremost, is one of many factors that, that we should always consider when we vote. And so that's, that's an important reminder for all of us. And with that, then, I, I think we are ready to proceed with a vote, a final call for any colleagues who need to comment. So I will, I will read again.
Please, I'm seeing Dottie Holtz's hand is up now.
No, it isn't.
Okay.
I'm dealing with a little icon here.
There you go. All right, now you have the all-clear, Madam Chair.
And we will be calling for a verbal vote, just as we did earlier, I presume, Madam Clerk?
Yes, that is correct, Madam.
So I'm going to reread the motion to vote. The motion is to cancel any school board meeting on June eighth or ninth, 2021, due to pending litigation and any potential public confusion regarding the date of the school board meeting. So that is the motion on the floor. And I will first call for, I will, Madam Clerk, would you want to first put out a call for? I'll let you proceed with this part.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just as a remark to the public, we do have a motion, the motion on the floor was done by Ms. Anderson, and it was seconded by Ms. Riggs. Now I will call upon each school board member to voice their vote. Ms. Anderson, how do you vote?
Mrs. Anderson votes yes, in favor of the motion.
Ms. Felton, how do you vote?
Mrs. Felton, vote yes, in favor of the motion.
Thank you. Ms. Franklin, how do you vote?
I reluctantly, I reluctantly vote yes, so that the public can be clear in the future.
Thank you. Ms. Ms. Holtz, how do you vote?
I vote yes, to cancel any school board meeting on June eighth or ninth.
Ms. Hughes, how do you vote?
I'm abstaining due to a conflict.
Thank you. Ms. Malnick, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Owens, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Riggs, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Rai, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. We have eight votes in the affirmative and one abstention. So the motion did pass.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And that, I do thank my colleagues who were present today and staff who, who also were in attendance as well as the viewing public. Mrs. Lanetti, any final comments to add before we adjourn about next steps?
Madam Chair, I spoke with Mrs., or had email from Mrs. Mannings' attorney. He does intend to proceed on Monday, so I will form the board on Monday as any results of that particular hearing.
All right, so colleagues, we will be on the alert after this weekend. So I, so this meeting is hereby adjourned. Thank you all again.